This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
So I think, given the time, that we should start. And we will.
The mayor's coming. We just, that meeting just ended.
Right, right. That's okay. So do you think we should wait a minute, or do you want to get started? Lori is not going to be able to make it to the meeting right away. Should we be coming a little later? So we'll give it one more minute. Okay, it's 6:06. So I think we should start. Right. Okay. So, good evening, and welcome to the April 26th School Committee Meeting. I'm going to ask that we all in. So we'll start with Ben.
Ben Hershey here.
Megan?
Megan Harvey here.
Maren?
Maren Goldstein here.
Shannon?
Dunham here.
And Cindy Kuzinski. Okay. So welcome. So you'll, number one, they have to bear with me. We managed to get closed captioning going, but for some reason, tonight, co-hosting has dropped out. So I will be letting people in. And I'll try to work on it while other people are talking. But it might take me a couple of seconds to let people in. So I have two announcements to make, so I want to make those first. First, we're going to be moving into executive session after this regular session to discuss complaints or charges brought against a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual. And we will be adjourning from executive session. So in other words, we will not be returning to the regular session. We'll adjourn from executive session. Second, this has to do with budget that we voted on. After verifying that we did follow all legal requirements, we're made aware of two points that we can improve upon in terms of our app. The first, we didn't include a summary of major changes. And the second was that we did not announce that hard copies of the budget would be available at 50 Payson. So people who don't have access to computers might not have known that the copies were available even though they were. So we're going to clear that up. And therefore, we are going to redo the ad. We've already redone that and submitted that. And we are scheduling another special school committee meeting where we will open up the public hearing for the budget again. Then we will vote on the budget one more time. And so all of that will be done all over again. Hopefully, more people can be involved and know what's going on. And we will be doing that on May 17. So there will actually be three meetings in May. On the 10th, 17th, and the meeting on the 17th will have just one meeting agenda item. And then we will have another meeting on the 24th. So those are my announcements for tonight. And now I'll turn it over to Megan. And do we have correspondence? You're muted.
All right, thank you. We do have a couple of pieces of correspondence. We had two emails come in this week, or in the past two weeks rather, about the tech presentation with some follow-up questions and thoughts as a result of the presentation from the last school committee meeting. Specifically, we received an email from Dreah thanking us for the presentation and asking some really nice specific questions about the role of a director of technology and how that role historically has been filled and what the role is going forward, with some nice questions about how it compares to sort of how other districts are operationalizing some of the standards that were gone over in the presentation two weeks ago. And then specifically, some questions about safeguarding students at school around tech and social media. We also received a follow-up email from Leah Ewing, who again thanked us for the helpful presentation of the mass standards that had further questions about how that would be enacted and what they would be operationalized and how that would sort of look. And again, some specific concerns related to tech use in the middle school and the high school and how we would safeguard students versus relying on firewall and empathy. And then we also received an email from Cara Hender, who had questions about the budget process as a result of the city council meeting that she also viewed, including questions about what budget the mayor will present and if there's any rules about what budget the mayor must present, if that is indeed a thing. And if there's explanation for why the presented budget would differ from the approved budget and then the role of city council and what ability they have to vote. So it sounded like from the city council meeting that they could vote yes to the budget as is presented or they can lower the budget as presented, but there is a question about whether or not there's a no vote option for city council.
And that's it. I just noticed that the recording that always starts is not recording. So turn that on again. It's like we made one minor change, which is a really important change, and it somehow messed up everything else. So hopefully, there aren't any other glitches, and I'm really glad we have closed captioning.
Which we practiced, by the way. We did. We tried to practice it.
We did, and we checked everything. It was all working fine. So I have no idea what's going on. Do we have gifts?
I don't have any gifts to report.
Okay, thank you. All right, so now it's time to open up a public comment. We're going to ask that you state your name and where you live and that you keep your comments to three minutes, please. Okay, first up, I see Sean. Sean Sheen?
Yes, thank you. I hope I'm being seen or whatever. I'm on my school computer because I thought you guys were meeting in person. Sorry, sorry about that. So I drove quickly back to the high school. So dear school committee members, at the April 20th city council meeting, two people of color who support the mayor said that I should not be reporting racial incidents because I'm white and I'm using my white voice. I acknowledge my white privilege and my white voice. I'm also using my educator voice, and I feel qualified to do so, given that I have two master's degrees and have been teaching in this district for 22 years. I'm also here on behalf of my students that wanted me to speak out on this issue. I'm going to set the record straight and say that I've not gone to the press about this incident. I would have preferred that this issue stayed out of the press until it was fully investigated and all information was reviewed and reported accurately to the community. I was disturbed that Western Mass News and other media outlets reported that the mayor was just trying to motivate students of color with her offensive words. What the mayor said is serious and shouldn't be minimized or glossed over. I acknowledge the mayor's apology. If the mayor was an educator in the East Hampton School District, she would still have been put on paid administrative leave, investigated, and her employment would have probably been terminated. This afternoon, I spoke with the mother of the student that was a target of this incident. She thanked me for standing up for her daughter. I'm also going to be receiving more information from the parent that I will end up relaying to the committee to help with the investigation. I thank you again for looking into this matter.
Thank you. Leah?
Hi, my name is Leah. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I've spoken before to encourage SC to update tech plans related to student well-being. Previous concerns stem from an awareness that the district could do more to address responsible tech use. I say this as someone with 15 years' teaching experience, who has been part of an NGSS curriculum development team. So I'm not unfamiliar with the use of technology in education. Originally, my concerns were limited to reports that there's rampant cellphone use at the high school and increasingly the middle school. I am hearing reports of incidents that disrupt student learning and leave students, teachers, and parents feeling uncomfortable. With this in mind, a teacher reached out to see if I would support a wait till eighth smartphone program. Enthusiastically embraced the idea. As a result, I've gotten involved with EHYC, and I've supported the work they've done to encourage online safety. The idea being that we are all in this together and that teachers alone cannot quell all tech disruptions. I am grateful to EHYC for including my ideas in the early stages of their online safety and screen time campaign. Nonetheless, I am back here because there was a tech update and another reference to wait till eighth at the last meeting. I was surprised wait till eighth came up again without my inclusion, given my relevant involvement. Going forward, I would suggest that invite-only meetings where decisions are made become more open to the public to observe through open meeting law. I also want to thank the SC for hosting a tech update. However, several parts of the presentation didn't make sense to me, based on my experience. Let me be clear, I do not blame any individual for my concerns. Nonetheless, we must stop pretending we're addressing things we don't fully address. My first takeaway was, why isn't our tech director giving this presentation? Why is a person who already operates as our grants writer, our curriculum director, and our equity and inclusion specialist now also overseeing tech integration, each of which could be full-time jobs? I contacted a friend and asked this question, knowing that she was our district tech integrator, only to learn that her position had been discontinued. This really surprised me because academic tech integration is common in many K through 12 schools and continues to be super relevant in supporting needs that naturally arise in all schools. Most of the schools around us have one or more tech integration specialists. Unlike tech specialists, their roles provide project-based curricular support to all teachers. I am super excited about our new building and potential projects related to these curriculums. However, they are not siloed. They are meant to be mapped out and embedded at all levels. I have seen what can happen when they are effectively managed and would love the opportunity to discuss and present options that do exist for our school, because all kids are entitled to the full DC LS curriculum. Likewise, schools must address inappropriate screen time use per these same standards. Finally, we are not powerless to change. We are a community of responsible lifelong learners who can do difficult things. Responding to tech is going to be an ongoing process and cannot be entirely handed off to EHYC or kicked like a can down the road. Please consider my offer to engage. After all, knowledge is collective. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Jean Francis?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I'm here to speak about the investigation around Nicole's remarks at the We the People civic class. And I know that you're going into the executive director or executive committee after this to investigate this. And my question, my thoughts are, well, first of all, sorry, let me take this off so you can see me. Sorry. Um, that, what is there to be investigated? I mean, I think it's pretty clear what was said, the remarks that were said, and also pretty clear the impact that it had on not only the student that she was talking to, but the whole class. So I'm, you know, I'm sort of curious to know what the investigation is going to involve. What does that mean? And I, as I spoke this morning earlier, if it's two legal teams being in this meeting fighting it out, what good is that? What we need is for Nicole, our mayor, to be taking a deep look at implicit bias, if we want to call it that. Some would call it overt racism. You know, whatever it is, wherever it is on the scale, we need to be looking at it seriously. And Nicole is our elected mayor and leader of this town with a past history of racism, starting from 20 years ago when we had racist remarks on the city council, to the kids walking out in 2017 because of the racism at the high school. You know, and here we are again, you know, with our mayor making these remarks. As a 20-year resident of this town, and I love East Hampton, I'm so glad I'm here. But I've also been really trying to raise awareness around white privilege and white racism, or white, oh, not white racism, white supremacy. And I see us stepping backwards. So I just, you know, and I really have to say, I'm really ashamed of this town. I have, I mean, I know that people of color move out of town, people of color don't want to move into town, and white people who have some awareness don't want to live here either. So I'm just, you know, I'm ashamed, and I'd like to really see something come out of this investigation that means something and does not just mean like what happens when the police department gets a report about something that has happened. They exonerate the police officer. Well, I don't think Nicole can be exonerated here. And Nicole, I know that you apologized and you didn't intend it to come out the way that it did, but it did, and it was hurtful and it was painful, not only to that student, but to all of us. So thank you for your time. And I would really, I'm looking very much forward to hearing an open report about what you all are going to do after this committee meeting. Because we, as people in this community, need to know what goes on behind those closed doors and what you are doing. So thank you very much for all of your work. I know that you all work very hard, and I certainly appreciate it. We need to move forward here. We need to move forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Shelby?
Hi, my name is Shelby Lee, and I am in Ward 4. And I just wanted to follow up with what Jean was saying and offer my support to the notion that there needs to be follow-up and openness in this process and kind of movement forward. I also wanted to add a comment that I was at the city council meeting on March 20th, where the mayor spoke about this incident. And I don't know if it was intended to be an apology, but it really didn't. About the situation, she addressed the situation. It really, I think it was intended to be an apology, but it really came off as just, well, I'm sorry, what I said was taken the wrong way. And I think that's something that we need to address as, you know, not an acceptable resolution to the situation. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm scrolling through. I'm looking, if you want to say anything, please indicate pretty quickly. Right now, I am not seeing anybody else who wants to talk. I'm gonna check one more time. Jean, you can only speak once. Sorry.
I just want to say, I'm from precinct two.
Okay, thank you. So I'm looking, and I do not. I do not see anybody else. Okay, I'm just about to close public speak. All right, I thank everybody for their comments. Does anybody else see anybody that I may be missing? No? Okay, good. All right, so we are going to close on public speak. Thank you, everybody. And we are going to go on to our presentation and discussion items, and that is Dr. Leclair.
Thank you. I just want to make sure Kayla Scanlon's not here tonight, right? We don't have our student rep? I did not want to.
No, no, no.
I did not want to miss her. Okay.
Yeah, no, she, sorry, she is not here, and I should have announced that, so.
Okay, I just want to remind everyone. Well, I'll get to it in my announcements, but Mamma Mia is this weekend, so don't let me forget. So tonight, I am here for my presentation to make a recommendation to members of the school committee for a new director of business services. And I want to just talk for a moment about the process that we undertook. I think you received a memo with the recommendation from me in your packet. But for everyone listening, just to kind of go over the process a little bit, first of all, I want to say that Dale Doran, who's been in several of our school committee meetings, is retiring after many years of service in public education. She's retiring on June 30. And so we have been holding a search for her replacement, and Dale is a difficult person to replace. We posted the position a few months ago when we received the notice from Dale. And we actually extended the posting, the opening, longer because it's a very difficult position to fill in a public school. And we were not gleaning the candidates we were hoping to glean. So we extended the search, we adjusted the timeline, I think, a few times. And we convened a committee, because we don't hire positions like this just by one person. So for everyone listening on the call, the committee was run by myself. Normally Dale would chair a committee like this, but we were replacing Dale, so I ran this committee. And we had Julianne Levin, our director of curriculum. We had Dr. Jill Pasquini Torchia, our principal at Center Peppin. Andrea McCallum, who is our assistant principal at Center Peppin. Sean Sheen and Amy Gogger, who are, you heard Sean earlier this evening. Sean and Amy are both within the leadership of the EEA, our union. And we had Maren Goldstein, who is a member of the school committee, and he's also the chair of the finance subcommittee. So we convened our committee, and one of the first things we did when we convened is we reviewed all of the applications that were submitted to us on school spring. We included, to be transparent, we shared all applications, whether they met the threshold of qualifications or not. The committee saw them all. And the committee went through all of the applications and selected four candidates to interview. And they also selected a series of questions from a pool of questions that I provided to them. The questions varied in range from questions that were really about the role of the school business director and also questions that were aligned to our values around equity. So we had a series of questions that we chose as a group. And then we held interviews prior to school vacation. We did all four interviews, all four candidates came in for interviews, we met with them. The committee was hoping to forward two candidates to me that I would conduct second interviews for, and then I would make a selection to recommend to you. But at the end of the process, at the end of that night, we had one candidate that really was the shining star in our process, and that was Mr. Nick Bernier, who's on the call tonight with us. Mr. Bernier is currently the business director for the North Hampton Public Schools. And prior to that, he was a school administrator in Agawam. He was a principal and also a teacher. So he brings some of the characteristics and qualities that we're looking for in a school business leader. He has an understanding of what it's like to be a teacher, what it's like to be a building administrator. So he can relate to the types of budget challenges that we face in every school district. And I, so I was really very pleasantly. I was delighted to have Mr. Bernier brought forward. I've worked with Mr. Bernier in the past in Agawam, when he was a school administrator. And so it was a unanimous decision to bring Mr. Bernier to the committee this evening for your vote, because it is your hire. It's not my hire. So Mr. Bernier knows that he's the recommended candidate, but it will be your vote that secures his position in East Hampton. And Maren, I don't know if you wanted to add anything?
Yeah, definitely. I just wanted to sort of agree with all the different pieces that you just stated. We definitely went through a full review of a number of applicants, interviewed four applicants in person, and really wanted to find the best person for this fit and this position. Carries a lot of diverse needs to be successful, everything from managing transportation contracts, negotiations, as well as our budget, and managing staff, managing facilities, just a lot of different pieces that's involved. And so we were looking for somebody that had some excellent skills in those areas and felt that Nick, with his background, really did bring together a lot of really strong knowledge, as Dr. Leclair mentioned, from his previous teaching experiences, principal experience, as well as school business experience. And so we think that he's got a long career ahead of him, and we're going to be looking forward to having him, if the committee agrees, to have him here at East Hampton Public Schools.
And Mr. Bernier, I don't know if you want to unmute and just kind of let everyone see where you are on the screen?
Sure. Good evening, everyone. I'm Nick Bernier. I thank you very much for this opportunity. I don't think I really have much else to say about myself that Dr. Leclair and Mr. Goldstein have already covered, but I do have a large educational experience in my background. And I think that makes me a unique candidate for this position. A lot of school business administrators come from the private sector, a lot of them accountants or auditors and the like. But I've been in a classroom, I've been a principal, as Dr. Leclair said, and now I've also been a business manager, so I can bring all of that to the table. And I, again, thank you very much for the opportunity to be here tonight and to possibly be the school business administrator in East Hampton.
Thank you, Nick.
Aaron?
Unless there's questions. I know we've got a lot to do, so unless there's questions or such. I could make a motion that we accept. Oh, yeah?
You're on mute, ma'am. No, you're okay. We can hear you now.
There you go. Yeah, I mean, I appreciate the thoughtfulness and the work of the committee, and Mr. Bernier's resume is excellent. I will be abstaining from the vote, though, because I really felt that, given the school department's all the financials run through the city and liability, there should have been somebody from a financial office in the school. I mean, I'm sorry, in the city, especially given Mr. Bernier's wide experience. But he's not an accountant, and he's not an auditor. And the final audit and accounting for money comes through the city offices. So I want to be very clear, no personal animosity or question on Mr. Bernier's qualification or the committee's vote, but I do, I do think that we should have had a member of the city's financial team on the committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion? Okay, Maren, I think you were about to make a motion.
I'll make a motion that the school committee accepts the recommendation of Superintendent Leclair for us to hire Mr. Berner as the next school business director. I'm suddenly getting that wrong. Yeah, close enough.
Director of Business Services.
Director of Business Services. Thank you for the exact wording.
Can we have a second?
A second.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? All right, Ben?
And Hershey, I.
Megan?
Megan Harvey, I.
Maren?
Maren Goldstein, I.
Mayor? Up, you're gonna, you're on mute. We need to hear you say.
Mayor LaChapelle abstain.
Thank you. Shannon?
Shannon Dunham Epstein. Just because I haven't had a chance to review any of the information.
Okay, and Cynthia. And Cynthia Kuzinski, hi. So there you go. All right. Welcome.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. I very much look forward to this opportunity.
Thank you. We look forward to working with you. Thank you. We look forward to working with you. Okay, uh Superintendent, we have an update on We the People?
Well, I I was hoping to have an update on We the People, but decision is at eight o'clock tonight, so we still have to wait a little while longer. They're on their way back. Um, I do know that, and they're hoping to watch the results live at eight o'clock at the high school. So we have to keep our fingers crossed for that one. Um, but I know no matter what, we're all proud of these students. They made it to the final twelve yesterday, so we're really, could not be prouder of them, no matter what the outcome is. Um, so we'll keep everyone posted on that. I do have a couple of the things that I want to mention. Um, as I said before, don't forget Mama Mia, the High School Musical is this weekend, Thursday, Friday and Saturday. So um they're honoring tickets. It was supposed to go um a few weeks ago. Um, but if you need to buy tickets, they'll have tickets on sale. I also want to let everyone know that this Thursday night, August 28th, these, the Special Education Parent Advisory Council will hold their first meeting. That's the CPAC Group. They're meeting, they're having a meet and greet at 6:30 at Mountain View School. Um, it's been posted on our social media and I think it's on our website. It's been quite a long time since they've met during, you know, they did not meet during COVID. So it was really um Evan Zimer and Amy Gogger that kind of resurrected this um again and reinvigorated it. So they will be holding an in-person event at Mountain View Thursday night at 6:30. They will also have a Zoom link for anyone that would like to join in a hybrid format. So be on the lookout for information on that if you would like to attend. And I have one more thing to say. Um. Oh, I was just going to make the announcement about the budget hearing, but you already did that, Cindy. So that's all I have for this evening.
Okay. All right, thank you. Um. So I just had a quick question. So as of yesterday, they were uh narrowed down to 12.
Yes, they were in the top 12 going for the finals.
Wow, okay.
Top 12 in the country.
Right, right.
Let's keep that in perspective, yeah.
No, that's awesome. All right, so I'll be dying to hear how that, how that turned out. Okay, um on to Subcommittee Updates. Do we have any?
Finance Committee will be meeting next week on Monday at 4:00 PM. Uh, should be up online already if you want to attend to hear about Budget First Actuals um through quarter three.
All right. Uh, do we have anything else? Ben, when is the collaborative meeting?
Uh, we met uh last month, um and I think there's another one in, at the end of May. Um, but there's no April meeting, so.
No April meeting, okay. Okay. Okay, Megan, do you have an update?
The COVID Advisory Group did not meet, although um Dr. Dr. Leclerc and I did um have some back and forth since our meeting two weeks ago, as we were watching sort of the numbers going up. And um Dr. Leclerc sent an email out based on um those discussions with a strong recommendation for masking this week. And we are continuing to watch the numbers and I don't have an update beyond that or and if there's going to be a future um meeting scheduled and what that will look like. But the um data for the city for last week was just posted and sent to School Committee earlier today. And our rates are are up, so it's something to be thinking about. Um. While we still wait, unfortunately, I wish there was a another update, us still waiting for that pediatric vaccine for six months to under five.
Right. Dr. Leclerc, how is the um suggestion that people mask up for this week? How is that going? Are people participating?
Well, we, so we, we had a few things that we suggested people do. Um, masking was one, and I think that um it's, I'll be honest, it's had some mixed reviews. Um, I think, I think more people started off wearing masks yesterday and they're, they're starting to peter out today. But um I'll keep an eye on it. And uh we also asked people to test on Sunday or Monday morning um because everyone pretty much has access to at-home tests. And we really feel that if they did it right then, it would help to eliminate people entering our doors with COVID at the beginning of the week. And I did hear from a lot of people that did that. Um, a lot of staff members complied with that, a lot of families complied with that. So I'm really grateful for that, and I think that's been very helpful. Um, and that's probably the biggest piece for us. And then the pooled testing um where we did, we did pooled testing yesterday, pooled testing today. I've only seen one positive pool. I get all the positive pools in the district sent my way. Um, and so a positive pool doesn't even necessarily mean a positive case. Sometimes it means um that the person put a swab in the test, in the, in the, in the tube that they shouldn't have, they put it in the wrong way, or they had COVID within the last 90 days and they shouldn't have been retesting. It could be, you know, any reason, but I've seen one. Um, and I had, I think, 17 cases that were um shared by families um of cases last week. So those kids are not, I don't have 17 cases in school right now. We just uh for the families that did choose to share the information with us, I've heard from 17 families. Um, or the nurses have, I should say, and they passed that on to me, and then I put that into the database that we keep with Desi. So knock on wood, we have not seen the cases really in school this week, but the week is still early. Still, still early, but I only know of one case or one positive pool so far this week.
Okay, that's a good point, too, I want to just mention. So like the 17 cases um that Allison's referring to, none of those 17, if they were all rapid at-home tests, are in the case report from last week. So what you see.
Yeah, and I don't know if they were or not, Megan, yeah.
Right, but they, there's a, we know there's a large proportion of at-home testing happening. And just a reminder, that's not in the case rate. So the, the number you see in the dashboard is the minimum, and then there's some um increase over that that are unreported, that we just don't know about. And I guess the other thing I wanted to add is that um this week um the CDC has reclassified Hampshire County as in the medium category um based on case rate and hospital capacity. And I, it's hard to tell exactly in the CDC where, like how close we are to moving into that highest category of transmission. Uh, there's really no recommendation changes at this level. Um, but when, in that highest level, um which indicates that there's um significant burden on the healthcare system, the CDC recommendation is to move to universal indoor masking. So that's another thing to sort of keep our eye on. That's not a state mandate, that's CDC recommendations, to be clear.
Okay. It it is interesting. I think it's something that we don't realize is that the numbers that are published are not um accurate. They are the known cases and we don't end up finding the true number um because so many people are testing at home. That is one thing that has clouded the situation rather than added clarity. So um I want to thank the community for doing that at-home testing, and I hope they continue to do that because it's so crucial to keeping it out of the school.
Right, and we continue to do pooled testing and the Department of Education has continued with the at-home testing kits. So we have the kits for families. They just need to let us know that they need them. And people are still pooled testing every week. Maren?
I just would request that, um especially as we're tracking this and watching it, um, you know, that the wastewater treatment, uh, you know, numbers have sort of plateaued and leveled off, so that's at least a good sign underneath these other things. But there are other signs that it's still something to pay attention to. Um, I just, I would request that um, you know, we're going to be meeting again in two weeks. Uh, and I think that it would be good to have the COVID response team to meet in advance of our next School Committee meeting um so that we can have a recommendation from them um based on those numbers at that time about whether or not we need to move towards requiring masks to get in our schools. I'm not saying we should. I'm just saying we should have more information, we should have experts reviewing the data at that point to review, to make sure that we end out our school year in the safest way possible. So I would make that request, um, Dr. Leclerc, if you can make sure that that team gets together in advance of our next School Committee meeting. Um, and then to make sure that this is on our agenda for that meeting, to be able to review any recommendations being made to us.
Absolutely.
Excellent point. All right. Okay, um. Megan?
I, I can see Shannon's hand up. I didn't know she had.
Okay, Shannon?
I just wanted to uh make a mention that um the Policy Subcommittee did have a meeting scheduled for last week. It didn't actually come off without a, without a hitch. Um, but we will definitely be rescheduling another meeting um here shortly, because there's a few things that we did discuss, discuss that we wanted to um go over.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So anything else? All right, we have uh the minutes have been submitted for the March 7th uh Finance Subcommittee meeting. Do we have any other items? Here's Lori. Sorry. Uh, I'm going to give Lori a chance. There's Lori connecting. So Shannon, you're set. Lori, are you on? Can you hear us? We cannot hear you. All right, well, Lori, while you're connecting, um the mayor raised her hand. So mayor?
Um, thank you, Chair. Um, I want to read into the record a public statement that I shared with the City Council uh last week and address another topic. Uh, at the We the People Practice Session, I intended to share my perspective about implicit bias that may factor into the judging decisions. Yes, I swore. Yes, I had a rough morning, not excusable, but human. As soon as I learned the effect of my words on the student and their family, I reached out directly. Before I left on vacation, I met with the parents, Superintendent, Principals, and We the People Instructor. I wrote fa, I wrote letters to the family and to the class. My comments were intended to strengthen the students' arguments by acknowledging factors that are out of their control, the bias oft- often faced by people of color. I believe deeply that understanding and part, and anticipating possible bias is essential when delivering public remarks, but my words were heard differently by a student and their family. I assumed they would understand my intent, and I was wrong. As a woman, I am familiar with bias, but being the other is not my experience. My presumption of how to best deliver my comments caused harm. I shouldn't have assumed that my audience would understand my intent. I fully appreciate the mistake I made, and I will do my best not to make it again. I understand also that there is an allegation of retaliation from Sean Sheehan, the President of the East Hampton Teachers Association. Superintendent Leclerc asked months ago if EHS could use a city 15-passenger van to transport students to sporting events so they could participate. While the School Department looked for a registered student transportation uh vehicle, I agreed the city van could be used as a stopgap measure as allowed under the Student Transportation Regulations of the Commonwealth. The requests for this van became more and more regular and directly to my office. This land, this van is not licensed for school transport on a regular basis. It's not insured to that, and there's a reason we don't transport students in just any municipal vehicle. I emailed the Superintendent on April 7th after another request was made by a teacher. I said the van is not licensed for regular student transport. The Superintendent quickly responded, "My apologies, Mayor. I have no idea whether contacting your office." I will send a notice to all Allison. I've issued apologies, public and private. I've issued statements, also public and private. I honor your process and I'm here in good faith because we have work to do in our schools. If there's any outstanding questions that the committee members uh have for me following tonight's executive session, I am hand, I am happy to answer them. I do look forward to going forward with this process and continuing the important work before this committee. Thank you for the opportunity, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Okay, is there any other on our agenda? Uh, Lori? You, okay.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes. Yes, uh, you're fading in and out. Try to speak and we'll see if we can hear you. You're just reverberating. Sorry, cannot hear you. You might want to log off and try again, come back on. And we can wait a minute and see if there's any other before we go on.
I have a PTO update.
Okay, so why don't we do that? Lori, I would probably um sign out and then try to come back on. And I'll watch for you and let you in. Okay, Megan.
Okay, the PTO has been uh continuing to meet uh regularly. They report that their fundraisers, their most recent fundraisers uh were successful and they raised some good funds for some really great enrichment activities um for the schools. Um, they also um reminded their members that um you can always donate via Venmo, but also your Amazon Smile account, you can set the um PTO to your charity that you donate to, and so uh without any cost, you some portion of your purchases on Amazon will go directly to enrichment for the students. They are in the midst of playing an outdoor bingo event, which will take place on May 13th, um 5 to 7 PM. It'll be outdoors. Um, and they do, in general, always need volunteers and they have big ideas for committees um and things that um uh folks could do if they have more volunteers coming in general, but also some specific needs for bingo night. Um, like people to um, you know, uh be at a popcorn popping, whatever you call those things. You know what I mean? And scoop the popcorn out. Um, so specific needs for that night. Um, if you are interested in sort of a short-term volunteer as well. They're playing an end-of-the-year event. Um, they're working on Teacher Appreciation Week, which is coming up uh May 12th through, uh, sorry, May 2nd through May 6th. Um, they're also planning something for Field Day and transferring things over to what sounds to be like a very cool new website that should be really easy to navigate and make donations and find out what's going on and volunteer, and it sounds really cool. So I I think big things are coming, and if you have questions, you can always get in touch with Anne Tally or Megan Kellynag, who are the co-chairs.
Thank you. Lori?
Can I speak now? Can you hear me?
Perfectly.
Okay, I'm sorry, and I'm sorry about physical. I have the camera off. I just wanted to remind everybody, we are having our Walk Bike and Roll Event next Wednesday, May 4th. And the Mountain View students will be meeting at 7:15 at the Public Safety Complex. And then our elementary school students will be meeting an hour later. And I'm very thankful to the parent liaison, Jean Libby. She created a wonderful poster and we're going to tie it in to Star Wars Day and may the fourth be with you. So we hope to see everybody there next Wednesday.
Thank you. I'm glad you got that in. All right. Is there any other, other? No, I'm ready. Okay. Um, so now we just have uh we have minutes and payroll to approve?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the March 22nd, 2022 regular and public hearing minutes with the stipulation to withhold executive session minutes until
with the stipulation to withhold executive session minutes until matters are resolved.
I second that.
Okay, so Ben?
And Hersi, aye.
Megan?
Megan Harvey, aye.
Mayor? Mayor?
Mayor La Chappelle, aye.
Lori?
Lori Garcia, aye.
Shannon? Shannon? Did we lose Shannon? Shannon, you're muted.
She is there.
I see you. Shannon, you're muted. Unmute, please.
Just having technical difficulties. It's fine.
That's okay.
Sorry.
Okay. So Shannon?
Oh, Shannon Dunham, aye.
And Cindy Kuzinski, aye.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the April 12th, 2022 Regular and Executive Session Minutes.
I second that.
All right, Ben?
And Hersi, aye.
Megan?
Megan Harvey, aye.
Maren? Mayor?
Mayor La Chappelle, aye.
Lori?
Lori Garcia, aye.
Shannon?
Shannon Dunham, aye.
And Cindy Kuzinski, aye.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the school payroll dated 4/12/2022 in the amount of $635.26.
Second.
Men?
I, I, and Hersi, aye.
Megan?
Megan Harvey, aye.
Mayor La Chappelle, aye.
Lori?
Lori Garcia, aye.
Shannon?
Shannon Dunham, aye.
And Cindy Kuzinski, aye.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the school payroll dated 4/21/2022 in the amount of $573,564.75.
I'll second that.
Okay, Ben?
And Hersi, aye.
Megan?
Megan Harvey, aye.
Maren? Mayor?
Mayor La Chappelle, aye.
Lori?
Lori Garcia, aye.
Shannon?
Shannon Dunham, aye.
And Cindy Kuzinski, aye.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated 4/21/2022 in the amount of $685,905.96.
Ben?
And Hersi, aye.
Megan?
Megan Harvey, aye.
Maren? Mayor?
Mayor La Chappelle, aye.
Lori? Shannon?
Shannon Dunham, aye.
And Cindy Kuzinski, aye. Excellent. Okay, the next meetings, again, there will be three meetings in May. There will be our regular meetings on May 10th and May 24th. There will be a special budget hearing on May 17th. And then there will be a meeting in June, on June 14th. So I would like a motion to move into executive session. Again, we will be, we will be adjourning from executive session and not be returning. So do I have a motion to move, or let's just roll call in? Actually, we don't need a motion. What am I saying? Okay, so, Ben?
Ben Hersi, aye.
Megan?
Megan Harvey, aye.
Maren? Mayor?
Mayor La Chappelle abstain, and I won't be attending the executive session.
Okay, Lori?
Laura Garcia, aye.
Shannon?
Shannon Dunham, aye.
And Cynthia Kuzinski, aye. All right, this meeting is adjourned, and I thank you very much. Good night, everybody, and we will begin once everybody has left.